This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, you can.
Call to order, the February 21st, 2024 special meeting. Call to order at 6:03 PM. Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Corrections driven toward the council.
There's none. No.
Anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
Of council.
I want to accept the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Second. Opened, seconded by Council Webb.
Okay, Council Wykner?
Aye.
Council Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Council Webb?
Aye.
Council Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, well, welcome tonight. And without further ado, we'll turn it over to John.
Thank you very much. So, welcome everyone. My name is John Champlin. I'm a landscape architect with a company called MP5. We have civil engineering, environmental survey. We kind of do it all in terms of land development projects. One of the things we do is design campground and day use facilities. So, happy to have been brought on for this project. It's an honor. And I know this is a big, big project for the city. And it's a big deal for us to be a part of it with you. Just a little bit of background on the project. Our contract is funded through an OPRD grant for the design. We're going to be applying for follow-up grant for construction first. What we have presented tonight is the 30% package. It is very much a first draft. And as you will notice, there are multiple iterations. Our goal tonight is to get your feedback on the preferred program for the park, meaning what types of campsites you'd like to see. We'd like to know how many campsites you want. That wasn't given to us, so we presented a couple of different options there. We'd like to know a preferred layout for the campground. So, we've presented three alternatives there. And then, we would like to get into a little bit of the details discussion about restrooms, potential paving, parking, how much parking you want to see, potential connections to the trail. Thanks for knowing the trail around the river, the lake, those sorts of things. We'll start off by looking at the existing conditions. Then, we'll work through the alternatives, kind of dig into the details a little bit, and discuss potential phasing of the project, answering the questions. We're going to have a voting exercise at the end. We're going to attach voting sheets on every poster around the room. Everybody's going to get voting stickers. So, that's how we're going to ultimately get your voice heard and tackled on this project. So, let's jump into the existing conditions. I guess before we get started, any questions? All right. So, I think you're all probably very familiar with this location based on what I've heard from you said. This project has kind of been in the works for a while. So, the primary access will be the existing entrance off of East Ridge Street that comes into the park. That is currently all paved. There's the existing restroom, some parking. There's a kiosk sign, boat ramp, access to the trail. There's also a host site, an ice cream stand. Doesn't show up on this aerial, but we know that it's there. We just saw it, and we've heard about it as well. The dark, solid white line is sort of the general context for where the project will be built. That is not set in stone, but we do want to keep, you know, a buffer from the trail. And we also know that Josette owns the property just to the south. It's currently private property. So, we set that as a boundary, just to limit any liability here and there. But it's the existing sewer lift station, which is actually kind of nice for our project because we want to have a restroom. So, having that lift station nearby is a big benefit for us. One key piece of the project is the old remnant foundation of the Wigwomber. So, that's the dashed white line, big circle. We heard from Josette that the idea, the original idea that came brought this product forward was let's configure some campsites around that. That'll feature, which is a very cool remnant of the mill. And so, we have kept that intact in all of our concepts. All right, let's jump into the first one. Again, before we dive into the design, if you want to reiterate, these are drafts. These are meant to have your revisions made here this evening. We do not expect that one specific iteration is going to move forward in its entirety. We're probably going to end up with some variation of all three really, as others might go with also potentially additional things that you may tell us. So, these are drafts. Option A, the access drive would come off of the existing paved parking area at the entrance, would maintain keynote F. Sorry to see on the screen, but keynote F is the existing gravel parking area right up next to the lake. This option maintains that in its place. As you enter into the site, there would be a host site along the left side. That would be an RV spot, which would be a 45 to 50-foot length by 10-foot width paved area and, you know, picnic and firing for the host. The entry would come directly into at a 90-degree into the Wigwomber, kind of clean that up, make that, you know, more visible than it is today. It's basically covered in moss and grown over. We'd kind of clean up that perimeter, make it a feature. And we would locate a one-way drive around that facility. Right at the...
Is host site G then?
That's correct. Yeah, I'll try to speak to the keynotes better. So, immediately off the entrance, keynote D would be the restroom facility, ADA compliant. We've got some options for restrooms that we'll go through later, but that's essentially the location for the restroom. We've numbered the campsites. The yellow are ADA compliant sites. So, those would be concrete, paved for a picnic table, firing adjacent to them, and an ADA parking. The orange site, and there's two ADA sites. The orange sites, of which there are five, are RV back end. Again, those are 45 to 50 feet, deep by 10 feet. We've kind of worked with the city. Currently have them at 45, but that's flexible. The remainder of the sites, of which there are 11, are all tent sites, and those are green. So, in this option, we show those as all stacked parking. Some of those are single parking, some of those are double. Some of them are 40 to 45 feet deep, so you could stack double parking. Each one of those would have plenty of room for one to two tents, depending on how many parking stalls there are, picnic table, and firing. One thing that we've looked at in this is we tried to maintain as many of the existing trees as we could. There's actually not a whole lot to the north of the Wigwomber or kind of to the northeast, but there are a few kind of to the south and southwest. So, we tried to maintain as many of those as possible. One thing that this concept shows is a trail connection to the campground and the trail. Go ahead.
So, you guys were talking about keeping a barrier between the path and the lake. That little practice of area, where are you talking, like, using the black barriers kind of as your natural barrier that are already existentially tall? And it's kind of, the campground would kind of be tucked behind those?
Yeah.
So, are those two up against the trail there, are those tent sites then?
They would be.
They would be? So, let's just put it up against the backside of the blackberry line?
Essentially.
Okay, cool.
Yep, yep. So, yeah, so this one would have a trail connection. So, you know, people were camping, they could directly access the trail. One thing that these concepts do not show is signage. That's kind of our next level of detail. Once we nail down the concept, you know, that trail access would be signed. No access for public, you know, only for campers to come onto that trail. And, yeah, so that kind of secondary loop would also be a one-way. The majority of the time, people that are coming to camp, they're going to park, but they're probably going to leave their car for most of the time. If they do leave, they're just ready to find the exit anyway, so.
So, where do we see that? Do you even know about the white horizon?
It's...
No.
It's D.
D.
The light box.
The white box, of course.
It's the first one we've got.
Right there.
Fence is going to fall.
That's about it.
You've been away. What is B? That's a sewer.
That's a sewer pump station that's fenced down there with green fencing.
It's the big reason why the restroom is... Yeah, actually good.
And Josette, I'm hearing you can't back?
It would be, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, it's not all that difficult to build with the handicap. And the restrooms, we're thinking these are going to be pre-kept units. They show up on a back semi frame and a plate. It's pretty, yeah, they're pretty plumb. There you go. So, that's concept A. Let's go ahead and move on to concept B.
Can I ask you one other question?
Sure.
So, with all the rules, do you have water with these locations?
We're not really at that level of detail this time.
Step two.
Kind of a question for, you know, what we...
Kim, are you...
What the city wants to see.
Are you asking about like hookups? Because you would have like one central spigot in a typical campground. What water are you talking about?
I'm just trying to hear if there's water at hookups or if there's water available. At one point, you talked about the water being...
Oh, no. Public Works has already talked, they've already been brainstorming water and sewer.
You gotta have, you gotta have some kind of central water source there.
That's my...
Yes. That will be built in in the next iteration, depending on how we configure the ground.
I think you guys, I think originally the water question became whether or not the RV spots would have water hookups.
Water...
Just can't...
That was a rational discussion.
The idea is that the restroom would be flushable with potable water.
Yeah.
All right, so move on to concept B. So, one thing I failed to mention, concept A had a total of 18 campsites. Concept B does as well. In this concept, access drive coming from the same location, obviously. That's keynote A. We did take out the parking in this concept. That's one difference. We have a paved parking lot on that entrance, which would service the campground, but it could also service the public depending on vacancies in the campground. The camp post site would be keynote F. It would be off to the right as you enter. This layout actually kind of works pretty well for the camp post because it would allow them to pull through from the gravel. We've maintained that gravel access along the north for maintenance for the city. And then, the pull-through ability for the camp post. Keynote D would be the restroom, so it's kind of off to the left right upon arrival. Again, wanting to locate that on the north side closer to the lift station. We have one ADA compliant campsite. That's the yellow, number one. We have 11 standard tent sites in green. And those are going around the loop of the Wigwomber. Again, this would be a one-way loop. What that does is it eliminates with the paving, kind of reduces costs, and also helps to organize circulation and keeps people kind of going one-way. This is concept. One big difference, there's no RV, but we did include six yurt sites. Those would be sites where you would park in the parking lot and walk to your yurts. Each one of those would still have picnic table and a firing.
So, you're saying that the parking, so just in the top right corner there?
Mm-hmm.
Further over, to the right, right, right. With that area that's now the parking at the lake area, you're saying that that would be absorbed into the campground area in this model?
Right. We would just basically scrape the gravel and revegetate that to kind of the...
Gotcha.
Kind of, again, kind of creating more of that buffer.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, yeah. Because, so I'm very, very connected with people at the lake and from out of town and all that stuff down here for a while. And that area, and a lot of them, yeah, walk far. So, they use that area down below there to park as far toward the back of the lake as they can get to, so it'll make some of that walk. So, in this concept, would they be able to park in the campground parking area back there? In this design?
It would really come down to how the yurts are programmed. So, kind of a standard yurt would sleep four to five people. They're usually going to show up in one car, but sometimes they might show up in two. So, depending on how the city wanted to manage that, we have six sites, six yurt sites. Imagine six to, let's say, nine cars.
They're going to assume around...
Nine cars, yeah. Overflow dedicated. We currently have 10 parking spaces. That could grow. That could grow. We could add parking. We could reconfigure the parking to accommodate, you know, lake users. But again, this concept really was trying to put more of that buffer.
Absolutely.
So, we also did not include a connection to the trail in this concept. So, it really, you know, really would kind of create more of an on-play to that camp, that true campground experience. Not necessarily tied to the lake or directly to the trail or other facilities.
Well, yurts were one of the things that was a priority upon being down there.
Yeah, I, my concerns about managing logistics, but...
Yeah, but I mean, that was one of the things.
Yeah, they liked it. They're not managing it.
Yeah, yeah, they're, I know they're a desirable amenity for people to see and to use. How the city wants to manage them is a big question. So, they can be heated, they don't have to heat it. I wouldn't recommend running water to them. I would really look at it as more of a permanent, you know, tent. But the big, the big one is the heat. What that does is it makes it 365 year-round because people, you know, people do see camping, so that's...
And they, and each of them appeals to a different group. And if that would really appeal to your white riders and the people that are using the trail, that would be a great enhancement for that site. But it's not appealing to handicapped, RV users.
Yeah, and like the first concept that had that trail, you know, the campground that connects with the baseline or the trail. We have, you're talking about year-round. The RV sites would, they could be able to still be able to camp there in winter. And then, there's a bike, there's a bike station that we put, a bike repair station down there.
Right.
And so, on that connecting trail, they'd be able to come up without interfering in the parking lot, having to go around everything. So, that's kind of...
Yeah.
Accessibility, kind of makes it wider and more open.
Okay. So, let's jump to concept option C. This is our largest. This has 26 sites total. This is really, while it keeps the Wigwomber in place, just like all of them, it's kind of the least responsive to the Wigwomber. It's more of really just kind of a traditional camp loop. So, right off the entrance, keynote H would be, would actually be general public parking. So, it's hard to read the keynote G, but Stefan, if you could, yeah, right there. That would actually be a day-use picnic shelter, which could be rentable, another revenue source for the city. It could also be first come, first served when it's not reserved. But you could put, you know, two or three picnic tables under there and have people that aren't camping reserve it, the people who are camping reserve it.
So, that's all right. This project, since I walked in, was to get a good mental view. This original concept was to do this project before COVID in the year, the year before. And I'm looking at this model, and you're saying there's 20.
That's correct.
We couldn't get our head past 12 when we walked in. And I'm sitting here looking at it, and it's like, where are these? We, it feels like...
Correct.
We just so, everybody would be so condensed together. So, Stefan...
They went further west.
I see that, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. If you could go back to the existing...
Oh, so you cut into the back, okay, yeah.
So, we actually went past that access road that goes off coming to the west and south. So, now we can go back to option C. So, we expanded that. We kept that connection for the city to be able to come in. The city, you know, may, and say, could still use the camp loop and connect. I would think, you know, kind of your standard forcer's gate, you know, to kind of keep the campers out of there. But still providing access, go ahead.
Are the, is the distance between the campsites the same in all the proposals?
Generally, it is, yes. Which are, given that we don't have a whole lot of room, we went with about 20 feet of space of buffer space, which we would propose to plant that, to help create that separation.
Where are those other two large green areas down below here on the...
Yeah, let me, let me get back into the, let me explain this one first. All right, so upon entry, keynote F would be the host site off to the right. Again, that's a pull-through site, maintaining the city kind of maintenance access around the back with the gravel. Immediately off to the west, there would be two standard tent sites. Instead of stacked parking, that would be side-by-side parking with double. So, that, you know, it's potential upcharge for the city. You can charge more for an additional parking. The yellow sites, yeah, Stefan, those are two ADA sites. Again, those are located near the restroom, which is keynote D. And the restroom is located fairly adjacent to the lift station. With so many sites on this one, we wanted to locate the restroom more to the center, the core of the campground. So, that's, that's why the restroom is located where it is. The, kind of the, starting around the loop, the green sites are more standard tent sites. All of those are single car. And then, to your question, the larger kind of green zones, those are group campsites.
I was thinking that's what they might be.
So, those could facilitate up to about 20 people. Each one of those has six parking spaces. So, thinking about, you know, youth groups, you know, larger families that want to have multi-generational camping, that sort of thing. So, each one of those has three picnic tables and a larger firing and a lot of room for tents for about 20 people. Working around the rest, there's six more standard tent sites. And then, as you get further along, there's six RV sites in this option. So, this one kind of has it all with the exception of the yurts. But it includes ADA sites, standard tent sites, group sites, and RV sites.
Just one more, number two?
It would be, it would be one building, but in this concept, we would definitely want to go to... Well, I would actually suggest four, four toilets. Whether that's for individual, and we're going to, we're going to look at some options for that. I would say at least four for this option.
And will they have showers?
That's a good question. I'd like for you guys to answer that.
John, yeah.
We're going to, we're going to look at that.
I think William.
That's a great question. This is, this option does not, and again, looks at, looks at more of a buffer. Actually, I'll correct myself. It does have a very small connection from the general parking, not from the campground area. So, if you were a camper, you'd really kind of have to go out all the way to the entrance along the general parking, which is keynote H. There, there you go, right there. And then, there's your connection up to the trail. So, the bike station is like literally right about where your hand mark is, your handprint. So, it's not too far of an access point for bikers.
So, John, the paved path is counterclockwise one-way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yep.
Did you, I'd say, none of these, is there any consideration of camping on top of the old burner site?
No.
You know...
That's going to be a battle every time.
A battle.
People probably want to, right?
You almost have a couple of yurts up there.
Putting yurt sites like the Wigwomber.
I can reserve those.
That turns into an accessibility issue because it's like a dangerous, like...
Yeah, I was thinking you almost have to put a fence around it, like, keep people out. So, it's like not a security issue with something. Yeah, it's something we didn't really want to get into, just policy liability of that. We don't know enough about that structure. You know, to me, it does not look like a very flat place even to camp up on top. There's a few areas, sure, but, you know, there's, there's some holes in there as well. And I have to choose to get out, yeah. So, we didn't, we didn't look at that. We, our idea was to kind of clean it up around the perimeter, but let it be, let it be in place. And again, kind of thinking about the signage, I think it'd be really cool to put some historical signs, you know, to show what it was, what this place was back in the day, but not really using. So, let's, let's jump through just some quick character images, and then, we'll get into some questions. So, I think you all probably have a pretty good idea of what standard tent sites are. Parking, picnic table, firing, place for a tent or two. ADA compliant tent sites have ADA handicap parking. They would have a concrete pad for a picnic table. The picnic table itself would be ADA compliant, a firing, and then, a tent site as well. Let's jump to the next. RV sites, I think you're all probably pretty familiar with Anderson Park. Probably don't need me to tell you about that. But we could have made some of the RV ADA compliant as well. It's not too much more difficult to do that, just a little extra paving. Something we could consider.
Would teardrops or things that, trailers that don't require, that are, that are full of nitrogen that don't require electricity or whatever, would those be camping sites? Or would they be RVs?
I think it would kind of depend on communicating to the public when they're booking, allowing them to decide what they're capable of getting their, their unit into.
I think some of the state parks I've seen, you know, said trailers up to 20 feet and use tent sites on there and be like this.
Right, right. And, and a lot of our tent sites have 40-foot-deep parking. So, if somebody wanted to, you know, yeah, for a, you know, big, a camper, that sort of thing. So, if somebody wanted to, you know, yeah, for a, you know, big up camper, that sort of thing, they'd easily be able to tent site. So, the images along the bottom are the, the idea for the group. Again, those would be large groups for up to twenty people, larger firing in the middle, and lots of, lots of space for tents around those. Yurts, these are, again, year-round, could be heated, not. They could be accessible or not, depending on if we wanted to build some ramps. And depending on what level they're built at, they can build, they can be built fairly low profile. You know, essentially just build a wood deck and make it connected to the deck. So, we could make some of them, or one or two of them ADA compliant. But these would have, they would be fitted out with essentially just, you know, some cots, a cot or two, or bunk bed cots, those sorts of things, and a small table, picnic table on the outside and a firing. And then, at the day-use area, we thought, you know, a multi-picnic table structure or something, kind of along the lines of the, the two images on the left. We could go with something a little bit more architectural if we wanted to. I don't know how open the state is to funding those sorts of things, but we could certainly put that in our budget and shoot for that. All right, now to the restrooms.
Do you have, can you say anything about the security of the yurts and how vulnerable they are to vandalism in those areas?
It's, that's a good question and I, I probably am not the best person to answer. We, we do deal, you know, some with kind of understanding how the maintenance works with some of our clients, state parks, those sorts of things. They need eyes on them, I would say. They definitely need eyes on them. I would say if you go with yurts, you're gonna want a year-round camp post, for sure. And probably, you know, a light, just a, an overhead floodlight, you know, street light sort of thing that helps to deter a lot of the vandalism as well. Yeah, I would absolutely say that if, if you go with yurts, you're essentially proposing a year-round campground. So, you're talking about a year-round campground. Okay, now talking about the restrooms, so the, the top image would be basically two unisex restrooms. So, these would be individual lockable door. You go in, you're, you have a private restroom with a toilet, a, and a sink. Flushable restroom, wash sink, again, private. What this does is it doesn't let a line, or it would actually have a line stack up if, if they were both being used. It also would prevent someone who, you know, just wants to go in and wash their hands if they're both being used. Would prevent that. What the, the bottom option shows is basically what's there now. Not in the, not in the architecture, but in the floor, in the floor plan. What's out there now is a double toilet and a sink, so the door's not lockable. You, you go and you have full access. If you just needed to wash your hands, you could do that, but not having to use the toilets. So, those are.
Do you have a situation where you've had the unisex and then you've had sinks outside?
That could, that could work, yes, yes, absolutely. I mean, we would want sinks inside still, but they, they have them outside as well.
I think that would, not tie up the questions.
All right, so this one shows restrooms with the potential for showers. The top option has basically, it's hard to read at this size, but the doors leading to the, to the right, the right side of these units are the restroom facility. The backside would be a shower facility. So, what that does is it opens, it opens you up to the option of people, you know, maybe renting an RV site for a week or two and having access to a shower. I think you would want shower portion to have specific access. I mean, that person gets from the camp post or when they look, if you have a key code, if they want to pay for the shower. I think it's an upcharge opportunity for the city. It would be additional maintenance. It's, it's a more expensive building, but it could be a nice feature for the city to have, to have showers. The option on, on the bottom, this has four units, four restroom units, and every single unit has a, has a shower. This is kind of the, you know, the Cadillac version. And it might be a little bit of overkill for your needs, but those are available if you want to consider something like that. So, with that, that finishes our presentation portion. Let's maybe, Stefan, go back to some of the concepts and open it up for questions.
I would, I was in Canada recently and they had, I ran into a situation that I hadn't seen before, where they had a bunch of doors. They were unisex doors for bathrooms, right? So, you had a hallway and then you had sinks out in, in the, in the hallway itself. So, the people could go in and out and it didn't, it was, it, it was based on, you know, it was a unisex situation, but still have that. I can envision something where you might have sinks in the middle, a set of stalls on one side and some showers on the other side. Have you seen anything like that or, I mean, it just seems like it would give us a lot of versatility. I'm thinking about those group sites with twenty people and, you know, looking at, maybe you're twenty people each and with the other stuff, like potentially it could have well over a hundred people than the camps are, right? In the big one. And I'm assuming, and most of those are not RVs, so people aren't using the restroom. So, do you have, have you photo something like that?
I have, I've seen a lot of different configurations and frankly, whatever we, we could come up with is buildable. These prefabricated units are so customizable. And they, they do have the options with the sinks on the outside. I think it would just be a matter of, you know, coming up with what we want in terms of usability. Do we want showers? Do we want them integrated into the restrooms or not? And then configuring that, that layout, you know, as part of, as part of the prefabricated unit.
Um, thank you, it seems, I'm just gonna, go ahead, Teresa, it's not a really question.
Um, I'm just wondering, do you feel like any of the designs could accommodate both RV and some yurts, even if it was less yurts or obviously less tent sites? Would that be an option?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I, you know, really kind of, at this stage, anything goes.
So, and I see what you're saying though, Teresa, because if you took that area to the right of center, where the, where the burner is to the right, and you have those camp sites, right, there are those tent sites, right?
Yeah, you could put a handful of yurts there.
You can, you can put a handful of yurts there, still have this concept.
And you both are going to.
And you still have the RV, the ADA tent sites down below, and you'd have the yurts and still have RV and yurts available year-round. And so, you can almost kill two worlds at once, still, I like what you're saying there, but.
Yeah, but I don't know how many tents you would really fill. I don't know that we know that.
And we still have the other side of the lake we're taking, that may still happen.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I mean, I definitely hear the maintenance concern in yurts, but I like. I would be, I'm, if I'm gonna camp in a tent, I don't want anyone near me. And so, like, I, I know there's a market for tent sites like this. I'm not it. But I love a yurt. Like, I would all literally search for camp, like state park campgrounds just to see which ones have yurts, even if it's not a state park, I necessarily have any, like, desire or radar to go to because it has a yurt and I'm allowed to listen to people.
And if you did the yurts up there, they'd be in a more secure area, they'd be closer to the camp post. And they'd be closer to the main parking lot area, so there'd be more lighting, more, more foot traffic. And so, if you took those tent sites out and put the yurts there, it would be like the perfect spot for them. Because I'm, I'm personally leaning way toward this, as I'm looking at adjustments to that area, because it still has the path to access down below here to get away from the parking lot, the cylinder section, the trail, still close to the bike repair station, which features plus two yurt site. And I like that idea, that's good, Teresa.
I don't think that the, where access to the trail is that big a deal, given how you're gonna pedal less than a block to get, to get back to the campsite.
It was the.
So, I mean, and then, I don't see that as a thing.
How much did the trail access weigh on the brands that we, you know?
Well, wait, there, it's right off the trail. This is, this is, this is, this fits with, with that.
Right, so.
But the other things that we mentioned in the application were is a restroom, a handicap restroom with showers, right? And that was, at that point, we were suggesting that be close to the dock so that people from the handicap dock could also access the handicap restroom. So, that was one of the things that we were looking at. But they, but we know that yurts are something important for county. We know that, that there's an increased need for RV camp sites because of the stuff happening in Westport, right? I mean, I mean, it's generally, that's a big, big thing too. And that, I think the fact that we have some tent sites, it's gonna be something that's gonna be appealing to bicyclists and others that are gonna be using it, so.
And so, the bicyclists that I've spoken to at the lake, they, when we were talking, I go, I talk to everybody, so I'm like, you know, they're like, hey, we're gonna be going out, we're here to camp around a little up. When I bring that up to them, the one thing that they talk about is having a secondary access to the trail because they don't wanna, if they're camping down these bottom spots, right? They don't wanna have to go across the campground and around to be back out to the trail. So, I said, that was one thing that came up in the conversation was the second. No, it's not.
Yeah, I'd also probably add that trail access to the other side, even if it beats one tent site.
Right, and so, it's like having that secondary access point to come up a lot to where they can just be out to the trails.
Yep.
So, one thing I'm thinking about, because this is kind of a low area and I'm not super familiar with like the site hydrology, but is there any, like, plant? Like, how do you all like figure out like where, you know, drainage is, or like where water's gonna settle? You know, I'm thinking about F, where that big gravel parking area is now. You have in the existing photo, it's just like a muddy, you know, swamp, which is, you know, but is there, I guess, is there, and this might, this is gonna be part of the later design, I imagine, but like, you, do you incorporate areas for like stormwater catchment? Or like, you know, just where water can drain to, like, specific spots of the campground that, you know, you kind of think of in this, in this early phase while you're drawing this up? Or it's like, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, it's absolutely a part of it. Whatever we do, we definitely don't want to build a campground that's gonna be a part of more.
Sure.
So, there are some areas worked in, primarily kind of along edge of paving. You know, camp posts, there's a buffer there. Where the, where the split off from the main circle comes, there's a buffer in there. Really, what we would want to do is get water out and away as fast as possible and catch that and, and move it so that it's not, you know, innovating the campground, for sure.
I wanna chime in a little bit too. I don't think it affects this one too much, but I shouldn't see.
Let's go to that stuff.
The first campsite on the right, when you go and pass the sewer lift station.
Right there.
That is right where stormwater comes out from, Highway forty-seven, Lakeview. There's a lot of water that comes out right there. And I don't, I guess we figured it out. I just don't know where it would go off the top of my head.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's something we're gonna need to look at for sure, because I wasn't aware of that. The drainage.
Well, it's vegetative covered, but it's like rows of stone that basically acts like a slowing for a drain. But the reason I don't like going into that is, if you go back to concept A, the access road that you have going off to the left is really California Avenue, which all the way to, where am I? All the way to here, it's a platted road. It's only not a platted road in this section where it meets back up. So, I like this, that this could, this version could leave the city dedicating that access road to a width and connecting it so that it actually, yeah, so that this, because this is California Avenue. It could actually connect all the way. And in our transportation plan, that is a secondary road set if we had to, if some sort of slumping happens on the hill up above. So, I like A, or staying southeast of that so that that doesn't get affected. The other thing is, if you took, I'm gonna nerd out here. One of the things about KMSA, about the ADA, if you took this and swapped it here, so then the, the ADA restroom could be by the ADA dock, you could do a trail out of it pretty short. We're not so worried about water and sewer because Chris, Republic Works, and we've talked about it. They would be the ones putting that in. Water's probably coming off Lakeview Drive, so the road north of that sewer station.
Right.
That's where water's gonna come. Sewer comes right along and they wouldn't hate us if we had to put in a manhole for it because they would like a manhole on that straight line that basically follows the road of A to that sewer pump station. So, there is a sewer line, new sewer line that comes there and they wouldn't be opposed to putting in a manhole and then just pouring into the side of it to get it in line with that whole system. Then you wouldn't have to go to the wet well with it. You could go to the manhole, which goes to the wet well, if that makes sense.
Okay.
I, I really love the idea of the yurts, but I am really concerned in this community with vandalism. I mean, it is, I mean, it's also, it will be a target. And I, I am worried with this particular site more than I would be, say, at Anderson. If there was a way to put yurts at Anderson and not here, I think that it would be, maybe less vulnerable personally.
But if your camp post is G and right, the first two right below your camp post were yurts.
And we're assuming the camp post is the same park post as the park?
The camp post in, well, we've internally discussed it, but we're thinking to clean it up, you would take the camp post away from the vendors. You would just place the lake camp post in the campground. If you were gonna camp over at the primitive, they would come check in with that person at the campground. And then, we wouldn't have a camp post on the side by Calypso.
So, the camp post would be across the way from the campground and less, less, have less view of what's going on at the lake.
No, they do, they do.
They'd be at G.
Right there in front.
I get that.
Yeah, they're not really, they don't really have duties of managing the lake as, as a park. They're really there as, to be kind of an assistant to campus and for restroom cleaning, yeah.
All the state police have.
Well, I, I think, I think the yurts, but I, I understand the maintenance and I understand the vandalism.
I think we had concern about like six or eight of them because the logistics of managing that is like extreme. If we had two or three yurts, that seems more manageable. It might not be the same park post we have. She may not be interested in the work that it takes for that if that's not where she's at in her life. But, yeah, we could see somebody managing three and some regular sites pretty easily. And we'd probably do it similar to how we run on, on Rover Pass. So, it would be mostly online reservation.
I, I am also trying to figure out, I mean, we've got eighteen sites in this one.
Yes.
This is twenty-six, what do you think? I'm also not able to calculate this, but I'm sure that, you know, you're looking at, obviously, it's gonna be a more expensive campground because you're gonna have a larger restroom facility and stuff. But if we're looking at revenue coming in from this, do we have a sense as to what the cost benefit is for the different models? Or do we have a chance to?
Well, I think the ones with a yurt or an RV, you're gonna. Well, I think the ones with a yurt or an RV, you're gonna have, we don't hardly get primitive camping. And that's a huge area, you could have that whole meadow over there when it's mowed, but to yourself, and we hardly ever get the tent camping. Just because there's, like Sharice said, there's people that wanna be in the woods when you're tent camping, not next to gym, or whatever.
And it's not accessible.
Yeah.
And you have all your stuff across the lake.
Yeah.
Well, that's true, that's probably true, that's true with the primitive.
Right.
That wouldn't be true with this.
No, but I still don't see a ton of tents, especially if they have to be in the buffer zone. I think that's gonna be a deterrent.
Yeah, I also see that they see this campground here, they see that there's spots that brings new people in, and they go, wait, on the other side of the lake, there's, there's more camping away from it.
Right.
Actually help, think it sells more spots in that primitive, much more people discover it.
Yeah.
Well, and really, an RV site can be used for a camp, for a tent, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's nice to have dual purpose, which like some of the tent sites really could just be dry RV sites.
There's some people that rented two thousand, didn't even know there was camping on the other side of the lake, so.
Yeah, so, oh, I, I just like the idea of RV sites functioning as sort of an innate buffer along the, what is the southeast? Southeast.
Yeah.
Southeast, sort of like quadrant.
Be southwest, or, I think.
Is that a marginal turnaround?
Southwest.
No.
Where they are.
Oh, no, let me come over here.
I just like the idea of the RV sites kind of, yeah, for forming a buffer. And like between the lakes, uh, you know, somewhere out here, if there's any sort of more primitive camping or Sharice camping, it's gonna be over here. Yeah, I, I, but I say, it's, to me, it makes sense. Yeah, yeah, and then to me, it makes sense to keep the tents more in the grouped zone, whether it's expanded or not. And then I really like if there's a yurt option, to have it over as close to the, you know, the camp post, sorry, as possible, but.
Right, so- In the first, I'll confirm. How easy would it just be to take, so one, two, three, four, those six RV sites, if it comes with those six tent sites? It'd be very simple, right?
Well, it'd be simple, but you're gonna have to change the arc, because they're gonna have to back in.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, it's all, it's all-
It's all play, yeah.
These are drafted, yeah, so.
Yeah.
If I take, what I'm hearing in the room from Sharice and from them as well, so I kinda see this model, right?
Yeah.
And then I see taking the six RV sites there, flip-flop them, those six right there, flipping them with those six tent sites, having the, having the secondary access.
Mm-hmm.
And then still using the area up top for the yurts, two or three of them up by the camp post up there. You can almost incorporate what each person is saying, just by simply turning it a little bit. You see what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, those four right below G could be four yurts.
Right, yeah.
Yurt village.
Yurt village, there you go. And then you put the six RVs down there, just left of the path, you see what I'm saying? Where that secondary path, you put, boom.
And the tents move over.
And the tents move over there, and it'd be a simple shift.
Yeah.
And I think you could spread it out if you moved the bathroom to that corner.
Yeah, more central, like you're saying.
Yeah, if you move the bathroom to the southeast corner, right there.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but still-
If the, the handicap restroom close to the handicap dock, which is one of the selling points that we're planning on.
Well, and I think you could split it and do the four up going this way, the bathroom and two on this side.
Yeah, yeah, you could do the-
Put a hand.
Hi there, uh, so, my name's Casey Mitchell, I own Taxon seven hundred, which is that dotted by a K itself.
That's my husband, John.
Okay.
So. So I got a, a couple, first of all, generally, love the idea, and congratulations, we've been talking about this for years, never made it sound like this.
See what Chris brought, honey?
Yep. Great activity, great outside city. I had a couple questions. One, that southern property line that kind of cuts through a couple of the RVs on the side. Would sure appreciate some sort of fencing in there, so I don't have all that traffic stepping across the fence on my property.
That makes sense, yeah.
So that's one thing. And then the other thing is, I'm interested where, so what I call California Avenue is your access road. And that was one of the ways that I was gonna get access to my four, transportation. It shows it going all the way through. So, but my question is less about that right now, more about where, where your access road disappears off this map. What thoughts you put in engine, because that's gonna go right through a bunch of parking that, when we get fish deliveries, that parking lot is packed.
That's the name, that's why.
F is still remain, F, the letter up there.
Yeah.
Still remains this parking here that's gravel.
Okay.
Which is why I was talking about this model being more favorable to access to the lake. Because the parking, because the older group that comes down there, like they go to the backside, and the ADA dock is over there. And so instead of parking it by the camp post, it's a shorter walk if you go park over there, so typically go down there and park, and then walk to the side.
And if you, if we ultimately pull this off and get F paved, we could have ADA parking spots the closest they get, can get to the trail there.
Yeah.
This side, right? And then the rest of it could be standard parking.
So, getting back to what I was saying, so it goes through the parking lot there, and then you're gonna connect to Highway forty-seven, pulling a bunch of trucks, pulling trailers. I would really suggest that as part of this, because I'm guessing you're gonna have to rework that. So, that should be part of this whole package to the state, because.
It's a pretty sharp, it's a pretty sharp current, I would say.
When you, when you start thinking about that happening right there, suddenly there's some brains to figure that out. I don't think current little item we got, I just don't think there's enough room, so. That, that, in my opinion, that should be part of your map, because that's a pretty big deal.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at that. Like I said, at the very beginning, we do have civil engineers with our coworkers with. We can run all of the traffic, you know, auditors, make sure all that is gonna function. I know that you can stack it up, you know, on something, something I could do at the same time, so. Yeah, I did, I did wanna mention, you know, on all the concepts, it is a little tight between the Wigwam and that property line. We didn't pave over that property line, but we do have some, um, camping zones that we can fix. Where you might put your picnic table, but, you know, if, if we did want to fence that, we could, we could move those, those picnic and firing areas.
I'm not so sure how accurate that's, it may be, may be five.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, is that pretty accurate?
It's accurate, it's six inches.
I work in land use, and we would require that to be, I'm gonna speak up, because this is owner, she works here. Um, you would have to keep it five feet off that property line.
Any giving?
Like any use period. You don't get to use it. So those ones would just have to be shortened.
But those are the ones we're talking about moving anyway. Yeah, yeah, make them shorty tent sites. Yeah.
And if they put a second ten or have a second vehicle, they can park it at the lot.
And just walk in, yeah.
My, my, uh, I'm wondering if there is a way, and right now you're still talking about one stall, right? For bathroom.
No.
With this particular model.
Yeah, we would need to do two minimum, for sure. Whether or not they're unisex or men's, women's, uh, I would say two minimum. Uh, preferably, you'd really want four toilets.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Even with the, uh, the eighteen.
Well, and I bet there's a kit that has, similar to Anderson, where it has three stalls, two sinks, and a shower. And a female side, a maintenance hall, and a male side.
Yeah.
Right? And then I think ours at Anderson has, on the end, it has a handicap shower. So it's wider, it's one big room, everything can get wet. But, we could do some, look more to the Ken to match Anderson with the amenities.
I, I really like the idea of the unisex, uh, especially in this day and age, and if you, and I think it's, yeah, I think it just ran so much faster. Maybe in terms of how people use the bathroom, and whether their sinks were outside of the, uh-
The tricky thing about that, Kim, is we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to be expensive, because if they're outside, they're prone to freezing. You're gonna have to get-
You've not, you don't have to be outside of the building, you walk, you go into the building.
But what you saw, I think, was a custom, and what we can afford is a kit. We have to work within, like, whether it's, I don't even, the, all of our bathrooms here are kits. They're already like designed by someone for your snow load, everything, and then you just pick the configuration, whether it's three stalls, two stalls. So I think something like that is gonna be a specialty, not a kit. And kits, what, kits still a hundred grand and up. I mean, they're still a pretty penny.
I just think if you at least they would look for that, an idea of the varied stalls, if men or women or whoever could go in, use the restroom, come out to the, the sinks which are in the building itself, and then have showers that are all sitting in the sex. It's going to give, for one thing, for, for those of us women in particular that stand in line for ages and ages and ages on. It gives, it gives people, it, it just was so much more efficient, and you didn't have to have as many stalls, you know?
Yeah.
You could have go three stalls instead of four, right? Because you, it's whoever needed to go, right?
Yeah.
I think, to add on to that, I just, I think it'd be nice to have, and it's gonna be something that's winter, needs to be winterized, but to have like a, a spring, summer, fall, like outdoor faucet, or a, you know, a-
Yard hydrant.
So the tricky thing is, is it's gonna be, if we do them outside, they're gonna be fish cleaning. Because we, but we have it at Anderson, and we fight people cleaning their fish in that kitchen sink all the time.
Okay.
So that's why I'm like, I'm trying to think of like the problems, I'm not trying to be Negative Nellie, but I'm trying to think of like all the things we've experienced already and not setting that-
Washing to the outside, I was suggesting that to the outside of the stalls, but why am I-
Right, but what I'm saying is, that's a, a luxury, we can't, we probably can't afford.
Even because it's not, you're not gonna know if it's a kit.
I'm pretty sure, I've never seen one of the kits, and I've looked into a ton of them, I've never seen a kit with like, because you think about it, every stall is about a thousand to two thousand dollars just in the hardware for the stall. So, if you, or if it's a door, it's even more expensive if you're enclosing each one into an actual room. So that's why I've never, I don't, I've never seen it where there's all of that, because I think it's a custom thing. I think it's, and maybe there's a company that makes the custom ones, but I think it's gonna be super expensive.
Usually anything custom, like the, the magic word, like antique.
They, they just, yeah.
Well, and typically, if you need to wash your hands and the bathrooms are full, you go to the yard, yard hydrant that's there, and wash your hands in campgrounds. From experience.
Yeah, outdoor faucet, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's a yard hydrant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The pump thing, like spigot, yeah.
I don't think the bathroom kit involves our decision tonight.
No, I just, I wanna be honest with that, I think we're not gonna find something that isn't costing a ton more money for like specific amenities. That's all I wanted to say. We can price out anything.
We can certainly explore it.
Yeah.
The two are, that we've always worked with, are C X T, less custom, and Romtech.
Romtech.
A little bit more custom.
Yeah, Romtech's what the two are, or the three are.
They're all Romtech?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, oh, I'm sorry.
I like this concept, except the bathroom, and if you could push the road over for the RVs, so they wouldn't have to zigzag through there.
Just hook it at the bottom of the circle.
Yeah.
Yeah, so don't-
So the bathrooms could go to the other side of the road by the, where they're trying to put yurts, which is kinda starting to fall together.
Yeah.
And put the road over, so the RVs don't have to make a right-hand turn there.
So like, where your, where your arrow is there, John? The second arrow below the Wigwam?
Yeah.
The one to, like at four o'clock? If that's where the road just did a gradual swoop and didn't go up and over, yeah.
Okay.
And I would think two showers and four stalls to go to the bathroom.
So you have showers on the other side, and they're working, and you're happy with?
Oh, yeah.
Being maintained and all that?
Yeah, we just did a, like a remodel and overhaul of them, and then we use tokens now, we don't use quarters. So we don't have nearly the theft problem of people breaking into the, because we do tokens.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it sounds like a variation of this one. And you know what, for me, to be honest, I think the, the third option is way bigger, like I said when you guys were talking about it, it's just way bigger than the original thought was, because we're thinking if it got so big, there's a lot of houses right up on the ridge, and it's gonna create loud, and it's gonna create noise and stuff like that for the neighbors. And so keeping it on a smaller scale was kind of the original idea. Mayor Walkin is, just kind of have another campground, but not like blow up the neighbors kind of thing. So, I'm, if I'm having that first one, plus we can adjust those features easily on that first one. You know, like I said, adjusting the yurts in there, like Sharice said, moving, flip-flopping those tent sites with the RV sites, easy, easy, like you said, simple. Adjustments to this model, and then, I'm sorry. Oh, gotcha, and then like Alan said, that, that turning area, this revises that turning area, then those are little, little adjustments. But this, to me, seems like a nice little intimate campground that's shaded from the lake. And you know, with all the tent sites being on the backside, it gives that rosy feeling, so.
So, sorry, that, didn't mean to cut you off. I had a thought. The handicap spots are shorter, right? They're shorty, they're thirty?
A single parking stall.
So those could go on that property line, they'd be near the restroom, near the trail access to get to the ADA dock, so you kinda could have the ADA bottom corner that's dealing with the shortness needed, dealing with the restroom accessibility. You know what I mean? And then RVs above it or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Just move the Wigwam a little bit.
I know.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a couple of turning exits to somewhere else.
I've been down the Corrfield, they've got cabins, and I think the cabins would be better than yurts with the amount of rank they get here. They're gonna cost a little bit more, but I think they're gonna be more durable.
And is it like a kit cabin type?
Actually, they had trapeze wheels, actual underneath them, they pull them in there, and push them up to them, and-
Or could win a lot of that.
They have cabins.
That was the, that was the old idea.
They have yurts in Fort Steen.
Yeah, they've got yurt time.
Yurts in the Olympics, make it happen.
They yurt sing the whole of the water, because if I love the beach, campground's everywhere.
I was, I was gonna mention Fort Steen is too-
Whatever's supposed to cause the damage.
I'm more concerned about vandalism.
I'm concerned about somebody splashing with a knife.
It will be vandalized a lot. Well, and I think you could solve that by just building in, I mean, you're not gonna stop them from doing it, but you could catch them. Just building in with a light at the pericoast with some cameras.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just show the access as people are coming to it, so you see them coming at it.
Right.
You'll know who's camping there, they're not vandalizing, it's the people that would be coming from a distance.
Right, it's the same thing you guys were doing with the parks.
So like a road camera, where it shows you as people come in or out.
Um, ability stops people.
Yeah.
If you just seen it, you only do it once.
Does the cost for a cabin much more?
Yeah, I would say three to five times as much.
Oh, really?
I could believe that, because you're, yeah, yurts are cheap, much cheaper material, and less building structure.
Yeah, I think you can get a sixteen-foot diameter yurt, not installed, but, um, you know, direct from, you know, the company, all, all pieces, for around ten thousand dollars. You'd have to build a platform, put it on, and get someone to install it, but, you know, cabins are gonna be, are fighting more than that.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's-
Yeah, and I kinda like the gray option, because I know parking was a big deal down there. Once the truck go in, and when the car-
And as a second guy who's out at Lake-
Once those black bears come in.
Oh.
I mean, preserve enough there, you know, making, making it, so then they would park two ways in there. But if we do pull the camp post out over here- But if we do pull the camp host out over here, there's always a potential of grabbing one out the other way. She has, and put some parking in there. It wouldn't be good for primers, but it'd be good for passenger cars.
Yeah, just like the cars and the trucks and stuff.
Well, the fire.
Efficient, trailer, they gotta have somewhere to park.
He could leave some parking.
Yeah, I, I think it might be a good time to vote.
Okay.
For the offing.
Yeah.
I think we're there.
Okay, all right.
So do we need to make like an option D for A was all the changes?
So if we vote B, then we, then we have a lot, then we can discuss the changes to that model we voted on.
That's great. So what we'd like to do is, is pick an approach, and then everybody, let's sit back down for another, you know, little bit, and pass through what, what do we wanna add, what's missing, what do we wanna pull out? You know, and then we'll talk about other details, you know, like dumpster enclosures and all that stuff that we're gonna move in later. So for the voting exercise, Seth is gonna, um, clip some voting sheets to each one, or a voting sheet to each one. And, uh, basically, we're, we got, everybody gets three stickers, so come up and get your stickers.
You're supposed to put your, two dots on your first.
Yeah.
Two dots on your first bid, one dollar on your second bid.
If we like, you would change it off, we'll vote for A.
You can't put three on one, you can't put one on three. Look at this, because this is one grade.
Is this being retrieved from campground into the dog's tongue?
I voted seven times. No, you failed.
Hey, where are we at? Oh, there's A.
Wildly popular.
Is that the A?
That's A there, yeah.
Looks like we're not going big.
Okay.
It's like, yeah, no.
I just wanna generate.
Yes.
Yeah. F T Ds, others.
I need to step to the order.
I think you're waiting this. Step to the order.
That's just gonna be.
Two on your first one and one on the second. Well, there's, there's one over there.
I don't give you, I like, I like the, uh. Right below the park host, I'd be really good eyes on it. And are you coming Friday? Rachel's coming Friday? On the emails. The pictures at the second search is all of it. She, she gets on her email. Yeah, she said Friday, and I'm here till 12:30. Uh, so sometime in the morning, we're thinking, okay, how's it ever work? I'm taking like the options, saying, little guy, Christmas he won, he's, he thinks space is massive for a guy. And for Christmas, he got us at the Blazer. It's mom and dad, so we're going to the Blazer, game at five o'clock. So excited. He tells me he's gonna be in the NBA, and my answer every time he says that is, I believe he will be. And then he says, and I'm gonna fly you to all my games when you're a little old lady. And I go, okay, then.
So cute.
RV site.
That one's real popular, isn't it?
What? I said, I asked Jana if she just gave it one because she felt bad for it.
I know. That's huge.
It is, and not, we couldn't manage it. I mean, we can very, Anderson, we have really good people there right now, but that's twenty RVs and twenty tents. That's forty sites that we have.
Camp host, or is that lady gonna do that?
It depends on if she wants the. Yeah, you'd have to be willing to do everything we need to have done for that site. And I don't know that she's up for it. She used to do a lot of, uh, fire watch. So she's kinda used to a little more relaxing, even, even in the summer, the tents, the tent even gets. It's a lot.
I'm impressed with all the good suggestions.
Yeah.
I like the road, uh, kinda connecting, like, this area.
I like the, uh, little exit, makes it good.
Actually, access.
Yeah, I think everyone's like.
Messy years, going to class regret.
I like.
Yeah, like, if you put it right.
Yeah, we added some. Our RV sites, because that's what we were really poised for, with an addition of a couple of camp sites.
If you wanted to do yurts or something like that.
I can just get the. Tom, I just.
We should, we should.
Yeah. I think you'd have those, that are. Just see men, yeah. Where's that one? This is two, right?
Yeah. How wide is your foot? No, maybe we should go six rounds.
Yeah.
So you're, you're, you can toy that off, because they've dumped the stuff all over there. But yours, there's a lot of dirt.
Did you check out your math last night?
I did.
It's kinda fun, right?
I wonder if like a tree in there.
There was a reason we went for tents, because again, there, we wrote some of this because it worked with the grant.
Yeah.
And they did not just want RV, they wanted some tents, and they want, and again, Palm Springs County wanted some yurts. So this, this combination makes sense. But don't get rid of the tents altogether.
I don't know, push a little bit more RV, it keeps good.
Yeah.
You might end up with a little bit.
Well, but again, if, if, with campers, though, like, full-on campers could use the tent sites, that.
Yeah.
That's still, you know, it's gonna crack up.
Yeah, because you, there's lots of people that wish they didn't have to hook up, right? Like, so those would act like dry, they'd be cheap, a little bit cheaper for not having the hookups, and you could pull something and have it. I mean, we have people that do RV spots for a tent, because they want to set their tent on compacted surface.
Yeah, one thing we could do, all of our tent sites have ninety-degree parking. We could look at angling some of those as backyard tent sites, just like an RV site, they'd be a smaller. So, you know, smaller, maybe it's a trailer popper, or, you know, somebody with a, a on-cap or a on-truck camper, those sorts of things. And either backyard angled, but we can still call it a tent. I just like it. Okay, um, yeah, I think we're pretty clear on the restroom. We do want a shower. We want multiple stalls, not, not just two or four would be best. I've heard that basically what you have at Anderson Park works pretty well. So we could look at that model.
I do think that a unit six is, is something.
A unit six, yeah. You know, what we can do is price them both out, and I guess we, we need to work this out in how we apply for the grant.
Yeah.
The restroom, the way it's gonna work in the, in the site plan, in the campground layout, we can kinda just take place, whatever type of restroom we go with. So I would say we oppose to go with the more expensive option in the grant. And if we don't get the money, we go with the less expensive option.
So are we gonna try for this grant to come out in?
April first, yep. We're gonna, we're gonna probably end up sending seventy-five, eighty percent concept drawings, which that doesn't prohibit you from applying. They, I mean, it's gonna be fully almost finalized, right? But.
Does it come, is it due April first?
Yep. I've been working, I've been working on parts of it, and then John's working on his part. Yeah. Okay.
So, that is a good segue. So our, looking ahead at our schedule, we're gonna be putting together the, uh, kind of the preliminary construction documents, if you recall that. Sixty percent is, is what they are. Uh, we're gonna look at materials, the layout, dialing in the layout, all the site furnishings, we're gonna look at, uh, city preferred pavement tables, fire rings, all of that. One thing we haven't really talked about too much is paving. We showed these as all asphalt paving. I would recommend if these are gonna be year-round, that, that we go with that. I agree, otherwise they're gonna become a mess.
Yep, a hundred percent.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so we're gonna be putting all of that in, and targeting basically end of March deliverable with a cost estimate for that plan, for just set to a like for the grant.
Are we gonna go for electricity for the, for the RV sites?
Yeah, they'd be hookups.
So the electric.
Full hookups. They'll have water and electric.
You probably have yurts too, but have electric.
No, no.
Well, I guess it depends on what, putting in electric, I mean, the simplicity of, like, a simple line in for like a light and a plug-in. Okay, yeah.
Will they have sewer hookups?
No.
Okay, so just limited hookups? For RVs?
Oh, yeah, I mean.
It's not required. I go to places that have none.
Yeah, the only tricky part is if you're staying there for any number of days and you're not using our shower, that'd be a Chris and Jeff question on how hard that would be.
Could they go down to.
They could, but they'd have to pull, undo their jacks, do, you know, it's a, it's a big old, I don't know that. I don't know that if we are gonna put in a manhole, that the sewer is gonna be difficult. Yeah.
Dump station.
You could do a dump station within it, not have hookup, sewer hookups, but have a dump station.
I guess I know a good spot for that.
Well, most long-term RVers nowadays have a poo wagon.
They just take the, take the black tank to the thing and dump it themselves and put the tank back up. Yeah. We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll talk with the guys tomorrow. Or Friday, because we're close tomorrow.
Strong water coming down off of, like Chris talked about.
That part of the parking lot, I mean, if you go there in, like, early spring and stuff like that, we have these downpours.
But that's all, that's all ready.
I just agree on.
Yeah, and then we can divert it to one area and take it away.
Down there in the southwest corner, there's a ditch down, drainage down.
Yeah.
Kinda drains into that left little waste area.
Everything's gonna have to come off.
Yeah. So one thing we're gonna have to get into the details on is adding a dumpster enclosure. I think that would make most sense, being kind of central and near the restroom, in, in the revised layout of this. We're gonna look at, uh, you know, where to locate entry signage and rural signs.
So can I make a comment about the dumpster? I'm thinking your best spot for it is directly across from G.
Yeah.
Because we have a household garbage issue out here, where if you leave an out, a can out and it's not locked, someone will bring their household garbage to it. The reason I wouldn't put it by the restroom is I think our dumpster trucks, we're gonna have, needs to be, like, right off a thing, so he rolls it out, he dumps it, and he drives on an asphalt thing and gets the heck out, kinda thing. And currently, it's closer to, like, they're pretty near our park host, just for that, but I don't know.
Okay.
If there's a normal thing in campgrounds.
They're usually near the restrooms, and the restrooms are usually fairly central to, to the campground.
On the way out.
On the way, ours are on the way in or out. The dumpsters, just because it makes, if we put it somewhere difficult, we'll have issues with, with the trucks.
Okay, okay, we'll look at that.
Have you ever figured out, uh, like, uh, down in Harview, you're involved in, they have a welcoming station, where there's a, the host that actually is in there during the eight to four, that takes the money, collects the money and the fees, or put a, a pay station in that little welcoming. the money, collects the money and the fees, or put a, a pay station in that little welcoming booth? Maybe right off the, sometimes the park host isn't gonna be there, they're, where are they gonna pay?
Well, so most, if we do it like Anderson, that's on Rover Pass. So you can still come pay the park host, but most people are reserving it online. Like on, because we're, we have a system Rover Pass that you can say, I have an extra car. This is the size of my thing, what spots fit me? It's kind of like, we give them our map and then we set up all the things they can purchase. But I like the idea, Rick, if this is where the park host is, maybe in the green that's by G would be like the signage that matches all the other park signs where it says, here's what's happening, or there's a fishing tournament, or there's, you know, a little kiosk area.
Okay. One thing that, you know, as part of our contract is looking at phase one and phase two. So the idea is that the full build out, everything we presented to you would actually be phase two. Phase one would be more of a, a primitive approach. We're gonna be pushing for the grant, so we're only gonna be looking at phase two for the sixty percent. Frankly, just due to the schedule.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna be preparing sixty percent plans for the full build out. But after that, we're actually gonna produce two plan sets. One would be more of a primitive approach. We would probably only do around half of the campsites, probably no paving and no restroom. But essentially it provides the city with a plan to implement this summer, if you, if you chose to. Thinking gravel parking, you know, gravel access, drive, gravel parking, still getting some paving table, fire rings at the campsites. It would be overlaid with the, the final plan so that when the grant funding comes from OPRD, you could come in and pave along basically where you just gravel and all of that. So just wanted to mention that we're gonna be working towards.
So phase one though, John, we're gonna try and get underground stuff in. I wouldn't want to grade the road unless these guys have the water and sewer lines and whatever conduit for electrical needs to be underneath the ground and then we cover it all up in the primitive road.
Knowing that the city's gonna probably self perform all the utilities, I would say yes.
Okay.
And we would want to get electrical conduit.
Yeah.
Anywhere.
Just so we can pull it later, yeah, okay.
All our, our old streams, but we don't have to, you know.
Just so it's laying there.
And just, just the conduit.
Okay.
And get it all underground, so I would say yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna be working towards that. But with that, any final comment?
I just have one other question, this might be getting into the weeds. Will you all, like, so this is an interesting site in the fact, in the sense that it was a, you know, it's sort of a, I wouldn't say it's a super fund, it used to be an industrial site. It's a wetland, but it's a recovering wetland. There's a whole bunch of stuff going on with both the soil hydrology and site. Do you all do, or is part of your scope like a, like a, and you mentioned that you're gonna try and save some of the trees and stuff and work with existing trees. Do you all do like an, an actual planting plan around the like, around the, you know, final design of the campground area?
And do you, so, and part of that, I, I, I'm just thinking like, you know, we, there's a great palette of like native trees,
native plants, do you guys use and specify just like, like native trees and stuff that are gonna go and plant? Okay, cool. That's, that was my question.
Only golden rod, okay, I got it. No Scotch broom, only golden rod. I said, the parks committee almost went feral on me. For mentioning the color of Scotch broom.
It's not a lot.
You can't help that it's your favorite.
The color is, Dale's been killing it down below, all of these things, every chance he gets, but, yeah.
You know, the, bringing in that primitive, primitive approach, there's gonna be a lot of earth moving in this project. There's, there's quite an elevational change down to the bottom and all the grading plan. Put the gravel in and let it sit over winter, Oregon winters, people settle the ground very well around here before we start trying to pave.
Yeah.
Fancy, I think it's just a smart move.
And just, yeah, plan for next, going into next spring, next summer. So it does come back to do the secondary phase with payment and everything.
Which kind of disrupts the camping.
Hey. But if we can catch it.
If it's primitive, there's not gonna be a lot of people camping.
Right, you know, if you catch it April, May and start doing some of that stuff, some of the very first good weather to get and set up by June, July, August, so we'd be ready to go by then. Good luck to you guys on that, it's not gonna take a lot long, it's great, and it's settling, it's not gonna take long to pave.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Thank you, John. Hold on.
All the terms and screening, thank you again, John, for your group, it's amazing. Go sign up for EGM.
Thanks.